Good afternoon. I'm now going to call the Wednesday, October 3rd Norfolk County Commissioners Meeting into order and take the roll, then we'll salute the flag. Commissioner Collins, Commissioner Stady.
Present.
And Commissioner Shea is here. We have a quorum. Would you please join me in saluting the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, just as it is.
Wonderful.
This meeting is being held live and we do have a Zoom meeting option. On Thursday, March 12th, 2020, Governor Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, National Law Chapter 38, Section 20. That order was effective immediately until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. On Wednesday, July 16th, 2021, by action of legislature, the order was extended until April 1st, 2020. Thank you. We're going to go right to our agenda. Number three is public comment. Do we have anyone today for public comment? Ask call, anyone at all?
The chairman.
Thank you. Number four, appointments, we have none. Number five is old business.
No business, Mr. Chairman.
Business. Number six is personnel matters for consideration. I believe we have three today.
Right.
Commissioner Collins, one in the treasure and two in maintenance. Do you want to read them, Dick? Do you want me to read them?
I'll take one. I don't mind. Thank you. I've got it in front of me. Mr. Chairman, with my pleasure, I noticed the move the notice of salary adjustment for Amy Ducat of Walpole, Mass. As payroll specialist at the rate stated effective 1/1/21.
Yeah, second the motion. Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote. That was just a correction and...
Dick, Dick, you keep going and I'll do the payroll and expense warrants. Excellent. That sounds great.
Next, two maintenance, please.
I've moved, Mr. Chairman, through you, I moved the notice of contingent employment for Edison McIntosh of Dorchester, Mass. As temporary custodian at the rate stated effective 10/18/21.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
All right. Last one, I'll move, Mr. Chairman, notice of contingent employment for Matthew Labadini of Dedham, Mass. As temporary custodian at the rate stated effective 10/25/21.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, thank you. Number seven, payroll and expense warrants, Commissioner Collins.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we move warrant 22-16 payroll county in the amount of $139,568.38.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
Okay, the second warrant is 22-16 subsection 8 payroll school, $334,599.20. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
The third warrant is 100322 expense county, $78,687.20. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
And lastly, warrant 22-04 expense school, $259,742.20. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
Oh, Dick, do we have your permission to put your stamp on the different things we vote today?
Permission granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number nine, contract, number, yeah, number nine, number eight, bid openings. I'm going to have our procurement officer Nancy Rockwell join us for two bids today to be open. One is for the replacement of a section of the gutter of Dedham District Court. And the second one is roof replacement for the our building of 53 Old River Place, Dedham, Mass. That's a maintenance building that abuts the parking lot at the registry deeds. So Nancy's on her way in.
Commissioner, with your permission, may I ask for the deferment of this action until 1:30 PM when it is scheduled to be open?
I'm sorry, this, the bids were marked for 1:30 and I'm too anxious. We're going to do the rest of the, more of the agenda and come back to the bid. Thank you. Number nine, contract awards.
None at this time.
We have none. Number 10, vote to authorize sale of bond application note for Norfolk County Agricultural School. In your packet, commissioners, you'll notice dated October 29th, which is the date of the closing, is a general obligation bond anticipation note, which is required that the commissioners endorse and take a vote. It's pretty self-explanatory. We don't do this a lot, but we have the explanation with it. The first portion again is the actual note and the second portion is the explanation by our bond counsel in this matter, Echert and Siemens. And we can, if you have any questions, now the time to act them, I believe we're set and ready to go. I have a copy signed by Treasurer Bellotti. No, it isn't signed yet. I'm sorry.
It will be.
It's dated October 6th and ready to go.
On the execution of your vote.
But if there's any questions, now the time, and then if we vote today, we'll send it on its way for the 29th.
Right, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if you're ready?
Yes.
So this is, so Eckert is the bond counsel, correct? Let's make sure I got this.
On this case, yes.
Okay, I see. And this is for the Aggie School, correct?
Yes.
Is this for, what is this for, like a shortfall? Is this one of our things we're doing to kind of address the structural deficit? Or is this for something else? Could you explain what it is? Maybe, if that possible, what the bond is for?
John, we're going to call on Director Cronin.
So Commissioner Stady, to that, to that question, the $1 million ban that is being put forward this afternoon is exactly for an agricultural school project that has been approved for funding. You may recall that we were poised to go out to permanent bond status effective in October. However, bond counsel advised that we not do that because our audit had not been yet completed.
Recall that.
Consequently, believing that the audit would likely take us until the end of October, bond counsel recommended another ban or short-term borrowing notice to get us through the next several months until we are ready to go to market for full bonding for this million dollar balance of that project. So we, to your point about the structural issue, I spoke with Commissioner Shea today. And my hope is that in the trustees meeting, I believe scheduled for November 10th, bond counsel can join us and have a conversation about exactly this point, the bond strategy, as well as the school's financial strategy to uphold the burden of this debt through additional attention to their structural deficiency by way of perhaps new tuition rates and so forth. So my hope is that in the next couple of weeks in early November, we can circle back and have a more in-depth discussion with our school partners as well as bond counsel as we're ready for the long-term borrowing scheduled for January of 2022.
Okay, thank you. That's just what I needed. That's perfect. Just jumping ahead, one more thing. When I perused all the documents relating to it, they stayed in there, something about the clerk of the board signing off. And then it kind of seemed like it was confusing whether referring to the clerk of the court or the clerk of the board. What I'm trying to say is if you need me to sign a document, I could come over tomorrow certainly and sign it if that's needed. I don't know. Do you understand what I'm saying? One of the pages, it said, the clerk of the county. Then it said clerk of the court. Wasn't sure which one which, but if you need me, I'm around if you need me tomorrow.
It is necessary that we sign. The clerk of the court happens to be the clerk of the county commissioners. He does sign these paperwork. I looked it up this morning.
Okay.
But it generally comes in after we take the vote. But on our signature page, it's dated October 29th. Now, do we wait till the 29th to sign it?
Sure, call, whatever you need me to do.
Can we do it between now and then?
You can sign it today. The vote will be today and we'll sign it as of today.
Okay.
But I do have a question. So to your, to your point, Commissioner, you prefer a wet signature to a stamp fixation?
No, not at all. No, no, no. I don't want to jeopardize the document or delay the process. If the stamp suffices, that's fine. It's just that I thought on one of the pages, I happened to catch where it said clerk of the county.
It's right here.
Right. And I thought, well, is that me? You know, I don't know who the person is and may that be maybe require a personal signature. I'm fine. Whatever's needed, I shall do. Now, thank you for the explanation. If you want to, if you can stamp it and move it forward, let's go. Please, let's move it. Keep calm, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I'm all set, John. Thank you.
Okay, yep.
I'm good.
Commissioner Collins, any questions?
All set.
Thanks.
Okay, this is going to require a vote to authorize the sale of the bond bond anticipation note for $1 million for the Norfolk County Agricultural School. If you could make that motion, I'd appreciate it.
I hope this is the correct form, but I'll say, Mr. Chairman.
Please, it is.
I would move that we move the sum of $1 million for a sale of a bond anticipation note for the purpose of the Norfolk Agricultural School located in Norfolk County.
Second. Motion made and seconded to vote to authorize the sale of bond anticipation note of $1 million for the Norfolk County Agricultural School. All in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Will be signed and sealed by November, by October 29th. Be signed today. Thank you.
Great, you're welcome.
Number 11, vote to authorize Patrick Higgins, county surveyor, to represent Norfolk County Commissioners before the Dedham Conservation Commission and with the brothers on a matter pending on Old River Place. It's a drainage line repair project that we've been involved in for most of the last year. And we're going to be with Patrick since he's come aboard with us, has been brought up to speed on this project. We are moving forward. This is a project was near and dear to Chairman O'Brien because it's in downtown Dedham and we, we work well with our neighbors on Old River Place and we want to work with the town on it. But we're getting closer to the resolution of this, the town is, so we want to be able to take a vote today, which I can read into the, it's a matter, we have it right in front of us, dated October 20th, saying that at today's meeting held October 20th, Commissioner Shea, Collins and Stady being present, hereby authorize Patrick Higgins, PLS, to execute on behalf of the county any forms necessary or permits relative to the matter of public proposed drainage improvements at Old River Place. Then it goes on that we execute, we authorize Patrick Higgins, PLS, to execute on behalf of the county any and all right of entry and licenses. The landowners abutting the drainage project. Then the further vote is to adopt, ratify and confirm all actions before taken by the commissioners in connection to above reference. Project. So we're going to make Patrick our man on the scene at the project across the way on Old River Place. There's plenty of work. I mean, there's plenty of paper with this. There's also a map that describes it. Again, this project's about a year old until we're ready to go. And Patrick's from well up to speed on it. It's a project plan drawn by a company, engineering services, environmental services. And it's prepared for us in the town. It was a brand new plan. It's dated 10/13/2021. That explains the whole thing. It's in everyone's packet. So if we have any questions, now the time to ask them, and then I think it's appropriate to appoint Patrick as our as our designate. On this matter.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, no problem. I would, I would, I'll move with the sense of that motion you read, but I just would ask respectfully that Patrick provide his updates on this since he's representing us and let us know what's happening. That's all. I'm sure he'd do that anyways. But it'd be great to get updates as it moves along. Fair enough.
Okay, I'll second your motion.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, we're going to, motion made and seconded to designate and authorize Patrick Higgins, our county engineer, to execute on behalf of the county any forms necessary relative to the proposed drainage improvement plan on Old River Place, which is across the street from the courthouse, goes down, the street runs down between the district court and the registry deeds. And we have some great neighbors over there. And that surveyor Colin, surveyor Higgins keep us up to date on this project. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll get that one signed and send it off and...
Mr. Chairman, before you move on, can I just?
Sure, we have Joe, we have county, Assistant County Treasurer with us, Joe DeOrio. Step up, Joe, and ask a question about it.
On the bond package, there was a vote paperwork up here that's actually five votes that have to be made. If you can, I don't know if you just want to...
Okay, all right. I'm glad you, I'm glad you caught it. I'm glad you're here. Let's go back.
You can see it, right? You want to read it?
Is that in the package?
Where's this? What, Joe, wait, I couldn't quite hear what you said, Joe. Forgive me. Did you say there's several votes we need to move?
Yeah, it's what's on the screen now. All just...
I can do that.
Did I have that in my package?
Yeah, that was in there. It was.
I didn't see it. I'm glad, Joe, I'm glad you caught it. I don't want to, I don't want to carry this over to next week. I don't have any objection. Can we go back?
Can we do that?
To number 10.
Yeah, reopen that?
I'd like to, if I, if I see no objection.
No objection. I'm all right.
People, we shipped it over here.
Just want to make sure we do it right. We can do that, right?
No, I want to, I want to do it right. We don't do a lot of these, but...
Right. No, I meant, do we need a vote to allow us to go back to that? Reopen it or what's the right thing, corrupt thing? Just fix?
I would say we do need a vote to go back to item number 10, yes.
I'd move, Mr. Chairman, that we, to correct the small error, we reopen item number 10.
Okay, second. All those in favor? Aye. motions approved to go back. Item number 10. And Dick, if you want to read what's on the screen, then we'll do the votes.
So we're going to, we're going to move the following.
Let me see it. I see it. I can, I can read if you want. Let's, let's agree.
Go ahead. Whatever you want, Mr. Chairman. I'm very...
No, I, no, whatever way you want to do it. It's, it's a vote of the county commissioners. It says, I, the clerk of the county commissioners of the county of Norfolk, Mass. The county certified that at a meeting of the commissions held on October 20th, of which meeting all members of the commissions were duly notified and at which a quorum was present. The following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the commissions in in my custody. Number one, well, voted to approve the sale of $1 million face amount general obligation bond anticipation note, the notes of the county to be dated October 29th and payable January 28th, 2022. Consists of 2.00% notes in the face amount of $1 million to Piper Sandler and Co. at a purchase price of 100.444% of face, together with acute interest, if any, less underwriters discount.
Motion, wait, wait. I'll make that motion. Dick, you want a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, the first portion. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of the notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated September 29th, 2021, and a final official statement dated October 6th, 2021, each in such form as may be approved by the county treasurer, being hereby, hereby ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted.
Dick, you want to make that motion?
It is moved. So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's the second part. Third, further voted that the consent up to the financial advisor bidding for the notes as executed prior to the bidding of the notes hereby is confirmed.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's approved. Fourth, further noted that the county treasurer and the county commissioners be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking the compliance with SEC Rule 15C2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the county, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Further noted that each member of the county commissioners, the county clerk and the county treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts of other documents that may be determined by them, or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I further certify that the votes were adopted at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that notice stating the place, date, time and agenda of the meeting, which engender included the adoption of the above notes, votes, was filed in the office of the county commissioners and a copy thereof posted, thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in such place or places as the county commissioner shall designate for the purpose of, if applicable, in accordance with the alternative method of notice prescribed are approved by the attorney general as set forth in 940 CMR 29.03 subsection 5, subsection B, at least 48 hours, not including Sundays, Sundays and legal holidays prior to the time of such meeting, that no deliberations or discussions in connection with the sale of the notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 38, subsection 18- through 25 as amended. This is all dated October 21st, 2020. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Treasurer DeOrio, for tipping us off. We'll be back next week. Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. We're now going to go to item number 12, which is a report on the American Rescue App, and then we'll go to the bid opening. Director Cronin.
Um, just watching the clock, we have seven minutes to go until 1:30.
Take that seven minutes on, on that.
I can, I can hear.
Okay.
Um, good news, commissioners, the Norfolk County Portal for use by the cities and towns in our county to place their applications has, has opened. It was activated Monday morning. NorfolkCountyArpa.com is our URL website. This is the portal that was demonstrated last Thursday to our communities. I believe we had just about 44, 45 participants on the web call last week. They were given a dry run of putting in an application, the process by which they can value check their input, the helpful links that are within the portal for them to follow. I have to say, the, the, the use of the product is designed in a very simple way. It's not burdensome to the user, so I think the community is going to find it to be a very good tool to use. In order to use the tool, however, the communities were asked to provide a certain information. To date, approximately 17 communities have responded with their routing number, their banking number, the, the email information for who is known as the creator of the application, as well as the community's certifier. Those contact numbers have been submitted to Clifton Larson, who in turn creates the profile for each of those users. Each community that has submitted their requisite information has begun to receive as of today their profile and credentials. So I believe they are actively starting to log on. I know I've received several emails. I know Assistant Director Buckley has as well. Our, our communities are actively trying to enjoy this process, which is great. So we're off and running. We have not yet seen obviously a, an approved project that has made its way down for your consideration, but I would expect one within the next week or two anyways. One thing I would like to point out for those listening, if a community has not sent in their credentials to us, they should do so as soon as possible. We'd like them to open their portal as soon as possible, become acquainted with it so that when they're ready to submit their applications, they could do so without delay. Regarding other ARPA activities, I'll defer to Commissioner Stady, who was kind enough to bring me along to Canton this week for an ARPA meeting. Commissioner, if you'd like to bring that in under this, I yield to you.
It's just, thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. Great meeting in Canton this week with the town administrator, the town finance director and selectman John Conley, who I think all you know, who's a delegate to our advisory board. John did a great job again explaining quickly the portal. And Canton has been following along like many towns, you know, the process. They had specific questions, which was great, about not only the ARPA money, but also the NEU money, which is a concern of many towns as well. So it was a very good discussion. We left feeling very good about the fact that, again, we feel like we're on top of this, we're ahead of it. Towns like Canton and others are going to get rolling and start their process. Canton, I did say, interesting. And I think this is typical, I think, for many, not all, but for many towns. The reason they're not applying right away, at first, they first, everyone seemed to want their money, correct? They were waiting for the money. But now they're actually understanding it and they're going through a thorough review. And they're meeting with their department chairs like we do, and they're analyzing their budgets like they do, and then like we do. And now they're kind of going, get the process going and they're going to be moving forward. So I think you're going to see many towns are doing that. And you may see some applications coming in pretty soon, but like again, not quite as fast as we anticipated, but certainly an adjustment time for us all, and they'll make it even better. So good job by John. Excellent job for putting forth the county's best foot.
One of the, thank you, Commissioner Stady. One of the things that we recommend to Canton, and now we pass along to our other communities, is the need to step back and evaluate a multi-year strategy for the use of these funds. Canton, like every other community, has what's called non-entitlement unit, forms of government award or NEU funds. We spent some time talking about the coupling of those resources with the county resources and looking at as a total pot of federal grant money for use of improving their community's impact as a result of COVID. I think communities that dive into this without a strategy are probably missing a great opportunity to look at a multi-year impact. Canton, for example, had multiple projects, Commissioner Stady, I think they gave us almost 20 that they were currently sitting on with more to come. And we encourage them to kind of look at it in a three-year chunk. Don't, don't evaluate, don't evaluate them all as a likely approval in FY '22. Some might be better placed than out years. And also to be mindful of the impact of likely inflation costs when they get quotes for public work, infrastructure projects and so forth. Know that those costs are likely to inflate by the time the cost is actually incurred. So it was a good conversation. Commissioner Stady, I want to thank you again for bringing me along. It was a pleasure meeting them. A great bunch of people. I was impressed by the finance director and most impressed by Mr. Conley's jocular attitude and friendliness with you. It was, it was good fun and they're good people. So excellent meeting.
Thank you. It was my pleasure. And like I said, you represented the county very well. It was great to be up there in Canton, of course, my own town. And I'd look forward, if you want, Mr. Chairman, individually, collectively, we could do more of that as needed. I would just be curious through you, Mr. Chairman, if Director Cronin could perhaps generate a list of the towns that have identified individuals and those who have not. And perhaps there's something we can do to kind of follow up on that. I'm sure he probably planned to do that, but I just...
I had the same thought when I heard the number 11. I think that's adequate. We'll have it for next week.
Yeah, yeah. Sounds good.
Maybe each of us, you know, collectively or individually, we know these different towns and we can reach out to them, break it, break the list up and give them a call.
Right, there you go.
All right, we'll have it ready for next week. And maybe it'll be less than 11 next, by next week. Okay. I'm going to ask your permission to go back to number eight. We have bid openings today. We have Nancy, procurement specialist with us, and that's one, we're going to open two bids. One is a replacement of a section of the gutter on Dedham District Court. And the second one is roof replacement for 53 Old River Place, Dedham, Mass., which is a house over abutting the registry deeds parking lot that presently houses some county records and a workshop for the county treasurer, the county coffin. Nancy Rockwell, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are you, Commissioner?
Good.
Our first bid for the replacement of the gutters is from La Rochelle Construction. They are out of South Hadley, Mass.
Rochelle?
Oh, you don't want?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Commissioner, with your permission, no, the record show it is now 1:30.
Thank you.
Right on time.
1:30. They always forget that we do this at 1:30.
They bid $207,000.
Fire the process, right?
Yeah, he is. Okay, I have cakeway roofing. The first bid, I believe, is he submitted an incorrect bid for the wrong project. I have cake, cakeway roofing out of Westport, Mass. Work all seems to be compliant. Titan roofing. Next, they tighten roofing out of Springfield, Mass. They've bid twenty three thousand four hundred dollars. Paperwork seems to be compliant. They have Greenwood Industries out of Worcester, Mass. They bid thirty eight thousand dollars. And that is their paperwork's the compliance. That is it. We have three bids for the this one bit section.
All right, and the first one, which is Dedham District Gutter Work, we have three bidders. Do I have a motion to take it under consideration?
So moved.
Second, all in favor, we'll do our due diligence and get back to you. Next opening.
Mr. Commissioner, with your permission, if I could just intervene, this fourth bid that Nancy opened, this would be the fourth bid, right?
Yes.
Um, the scale of this particular bid is considerably outside, um, the the scale of the bids that Nancy just opened, and I think she's right. The the vendor may very well have been bidding for a different project as in Norfolk County. Um, so we will notify the bidder that this particular one will not be considered going forward as it appears to be.
I consider that under our motion to do all the due diligence and and let them know.
Uh, name of the firm was?
La Rochelle Construction.
La Rochelle.
La Rochelle, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, a little, little.
You have to complete the vote now.
Okay, so we have three for the others, so we can, we can get to it.
You have to complete the vote, right?
I know, a motion was made. Seconded and voted to take it under consideration.
I wasn't sure if he closed it or not.
Yes, I did, and that, but that'll include reaching out to La Rochelle.
Perfect.
Yes. Next up is a roof replacement for fifty three Old River Place. First bid we have is F R G Contractor out of Everett, Mass. They bid fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
This is the so-called Blue House. It's called the Blue House.
The Blue House, it used to be blue, and then they painted us had it. Next, we have Unicorn out of Boxford, Mass. They did twenty four thousand dollars, or twenty four thousand one hundred dollars. They have La Rochelle Construction.
Over.
Out of South Hadley, Mass. Seven hundred.
All right. Nancy's noting the the address, the, um, the envelopes for the this particular bidder all have the exact same information. There's no distinction about which bid they're they're providing a quote for. Does that need work also?
No, not really. Um. They have bid thirty two thousand seven hundred and eighty two dollars. Then there is another bid from La Rochelle Construction, South Hadley, Mass.
Okay, good.
I believe this will be for Old River Place. They bid sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty one dollars. And the other, yes, is the gutter replacement.
The twenty, the thirty two, seven, eighty three?
Yes.
That that would be in line with the others, their forty five, twenty three, fifty eight.
We would include their bid as.
Okay, so we're sure your due diligence, you could put it all in the right place.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Um.
So it appears that the La Rochelle Corporation has bid on both.
Does.
Okay.
There'll be some, but some clarity is required, Mr. Chairman, to determine which project they're bidding for with the associated values that's not disclosed on a paperwork.
Okay.
And so the roof replacement at fifty three old place is sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty one dollars.
We have no others.
No others, and I'll be coughing out all these to send over to John. I'll be calling references for everyone.
Okay, on the second bid, which is the roof replacement of our building, the Blue House of Old River Place, I need a motion to take it under consideration. Commissioner?
If you may, if you form a vote, so I'm trying to decipher that what's going on with with John, Mr. Cronin, Director Cronin's comments. So it seems there's confusion on one of the bids, correct?
Okay.
Betting on, so how do we clarify that before we want to vote? How are we going to go about doing that?
There, there was one company who he his, he bid, he bid on all three projects with one opening next week. They were all labeled roof replacement.
Okay.
Uh. So I would consider that a minor infraction and not.
But during your due diligence, you're going to ask him and separate it out.
Yeah, we, yeah, I hope so.
Yeah, and this, and on one, he did write gutter replacement on the gutter replacement bid. Um, and the roof replacement, I will call and clarify with the contractor. But, um, it was easy to clarify with the, um, price of these, because Old River Place is a single family home, and the roof opening next week is for the whole district court roof. But I will call to clarify.
Oh, okay.
But we do have, he did bid on both of these projects. I was able to decipher that.
All right. Okay, so I'd move, we take this under advisement, Mr. Chairman, and hopefully, like I said, we'll get clarification uh, concerning the actual bid for that vendor.
All right, and to report it to us at a later meeting. Okay, thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
This concludes the matter of two bids for the one replacement of gutter section of Dedham District Court and two, the roof replacement on our house at fifty three Old River Place in our registry parking lot.
Do we actually do the second, the second vote? I know we did the first one. I think we need, I think we need to take the second.
Vote under advisement?
Yeah, the second.
Okay, the second?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go back again to the roof replacement at fifty three Old River Place.
That was the one we did, I think, right?
Right, we had three, three, three votes, three companies, Unicorn, La Rochelle, and I F G of Everett.
Right, the next one's for the gutters, right?
That was the first one. I think we took care of that, but if you want to do them both again, we can.
I thought we did, but whatever, that's fine.
Okay, I just want to make sure we did two of them, that's all. Okay, all right. All right, so we all agree that we did two, we did two votes to take them under advisement.
It was, it was a vote. I have it as a vote.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Number thirteen, report on COVID nineteen response, Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item continues to linger on the agenda. Just to keep it in focus, um, the COVID nineteen response is obviously something that still is in our midst. Um, this week I just want to alert the Commissioners that the end of October marks the end of the CARES eligibility eligibility expense period. Um, the Commonwealth will require any such costs associated with the CARES uh, reimbursements be, uh, closed out by the end of the month. As you, I think we all understand, CARES was the initial, uh, federal response, uh, for the COVID management. The the grant itself ends at the end of December, so I'll be working with Nancy to make sure that we collect any and all associated costs and remit them to A and F for reimbursement associated with the end of October of twenty twenty one. Other than that, I have no other COVID nineteen responses.
I have a question, Mr. Cronin.
Yes, sir.
CARES, we're talking about CARES now, we're closing out of CARES. We received one check last December or November before you came in.
Correct.
We sent the second submission in this summer. We haven't got the check yet.
I don't believe we have.
And this will be the cleanup, the last one.
It would be representing the end.
Whatever we have left that John McGowan or whoever incurred it.
That's correct.
And then we're off into another world of opera. Okay.
Correct.
All right. Any questions about the end of CARES? Which has been a federal program that preceded Opera, which was just starting Opera, but our CARES have gone pretty smoothly. They were, the state was happy with our first submission. And I know we were happy with the check and we're waiting on the second check, so this is a cleanup piece.
And one more to go.
Okay, and one more to go.
Yep.
Okay, great. Any comments, Commissioners?
Okay.
Number fourteen, reporter, the county director.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few items to address. Uh, first, last Thursday, um, I attended a Public Employee Committee meeting, also known as a PEC group, um, with Attorney Michelle McNulty, our Human Resources Director, Michelle Labadini, and members of the PEC. Uh, it was the first meeting in several years to reform, refamiliarize, uh, the group with its task to assess, um, health plan coverage for Norfolk County retirees and current employees. As folks know, we currently utilize a Mayflower Municipal Health Group Plan. Um, the PEC group agreed to invite this group, um, sometime, I believe, in November, the day escapes me, but our next group meeting will be in November to have a presentation of the existing plan, um, current utilization of plan benefits by employees and retirees, as well as projected cost modeling that may be forthcoming. The PEC, as you know, is a group, um, that is formed under a memorandum of understanding between the county and certain collective bargaining units, um, that represent the, um, uh, membership of of such workers in Norfolk County. The group has over the last, I believe, ten years or so, worked towards the goal of achieving, um, a consolidated understanding of the best um, health plan coverage models that we can achieve. This group hopes to conduct its work over the next several months to come forth with a recommendation of the next steps. Uh, one of the things that I'm speaking with Michelle McNulty about is the PEC's membership. Um, the PEC is actually defined by that memorandum of of understanding. But we discovered that the the county, for some reason, has not initiated something called an insurance advisory committee or an I A C, which is enabled under Mass General Law. And, uh, we're evaluating right now whether or not the creation of this particular committee can help the non-PEC membered interested parties, managers and units outside of the format of the PEC to give advice or make recommendations and then, uh, receive PEC feedback on how the progress of these negotiations are working. Um, it's a structure that I think will add more clarity and purpose, uh, to balance out the interest of uh, what the PEC is designed to do with the outside interests of monitoring and tracking. Um, so I may have some more information from you. I've reached out to Attorney McNulty to see if she could make her recommendation in writing to the Commissioners and possibly join you for an upcoming meeting to discuss, um, the activation of an I A C and further, um, questions, if you have them, on the PEC's work going forward. Um, I'll stop there real quick if there are any questions on PEC, otherwise I'll keep going.
Any questions on the insurance committee, the PEC committee?
Just one real quick, if I could.
Well.
Mr. Chairman, so went through you, of course, uh, to Director Cronin, when when do you think they'd be coming in again? I'm sorry, would that be in December, you feel, or?
No, November, November. Um, we met on October fourteenth, and I think I, I, I'm afraid I can't remember the date we selected. It's on or around the second week or so in November.
Okay, all right, excellent, okay.
Um, next, uh, this morning, this morning.
If this appropriate, I just wanted to ask, Mr. Chairman, if I could. Are you willing to leave? And I just wanted to know if we could perhaps kindly get, um, at a convenient time, an update legally in terms of how some of our legal matters are doing too. Just, uh, maybe get some time.
For future meetings.
Yeah, November, so just put it down in November sometime to get counsel in. I'd like to see how we're doing on some of those things, that's all. But, uh, November's on a fast, which is good. It's always good. It's great.
Uh, Commissioner, for your benefit, I did speak with Attorney Lopez this week, um, and I asked him if he had any updates to share, and he had none. He still had some work to do. Uh, regarding some other litigious issues, and he would get back to me. So the timing of when we have a man may collide, may coincide with your interest of November.
Yeah, I'll do it, we'll do it.
Earlier to, I'll move on. Earlier today, I met with Commissioner Shea on a host of issues uh, with the Commissioners' indulgence that we'd like to propose the following, uh, units of county government, uh, to come before the Commissioners to discuss the impact of the recommendations found in the Abrahams Group Report. This group had expressed an interest in receiving these units, um, so this morning, Commissioner Shea and I came up with a proposal and would like to utter it today for your consideration. Um, starting weekly, um, on October twenty seventh, that would be next Wednesday, we would like to start with the Treasurer. Uh, followed the following week by Information Technology, uh, on November third. That would be on the Commissioner's side of Information Technology. Um, Wallaston Golf Course on November tenth, the Facility Maintenance Department on November seventeenth, the Registry of Deeds on November twenty fourth, um, the Agricultural School on December first, Human Resources on December eighth, and then finally on December fifteenth, the Commissioners' group, which I believe would fall primarily to the county director to have a conversation about, um, elements of the plan with the Commissioners. Um, this proposal will allow us and you specifically to hear any concerns, recommendations, or thoughts from these units on how, um, and if they can implement any components of the Abrahams Group and what challenges they may encounter as you, uh, consider, um, the impacts for the FY twenty three budget process, which theoretically will start shortly after these meetings conclude, um, at the end of calendar year twenty twenty one. So we feel though the the timing's pretty good. Um, the other benefit of this schedule is on or about December fifteenth or close to it. I can't recall the date. Um, there's a scheduled advisory board meeting. So we may have some information to share with the advisory board about these collective meetings and the impacts it may be having on the fourth budget. Um, so through you, Mr. Commissioner, I put that up to the other Commissioners for their thoughts on whether or not this would be a, an appropriate schedule to put forward, um, as, as I read.
Well, I, I thought we should, the burden is on us to notify everyone that we intend to talk to them. It'll give them time to study it. It also leads up, as you said, to fast approach of twenty three budget discussions. And I think it also leads us up to some time between December fifteenth and the actual making of the budget in January to get the feedback, and if more, more meetings are necessary or more feedback or back and forth, it'll give us the wherewithal. I mean, we, we, we just got it two weeks ago. Um, I think the Treasurer's Office is as good a place to start as any, but I would like to make this into a, an official schedule and ask you to notify everyone that we've chosen this date in case it isn't adequate or there's, if there's any conflict. I can't imagine there's any with this kind of notice, but, uh, we haven't asked yet either. But I'm open to any suggestions. I just wanted to get, uh, going sooner rather than later. And it still gives people time if they're told you're going to be here in three weeks. You know, pull it apart, digest it, look at it, you know. Get some ideas, tell us what you think, and then we'll still have time to bring it to other, bring it, bring it to further discussion, bring it to advisory board when the time comes. And if we implement certain facets of it, it'll be able to be implemented for the twenty three budget, which is fast coming upon us in December and January. I don't have the first budget date off the top of my head, but, uh, I think the budget sheets go out around January, in the first week until January, but you may have a different system. They'll be adding more, but we're going to all be with the same system, so to speak.
Correct.
Any comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, so a couple of real quick ones. I think it's a great idea. That's what we're going to be doing, what we talked about doing. We said we were going to do that. We're going to bring people in. We're going to talk about the Abraham's Report, give everyone a chance, everyone a chance to talk, to vet, to discuss, and so on. Um, I just had a quick question. Um, I T, I thought we'd already had in, I may be mistaken. I thought Mr. McDonald came in.
He was, that was.
Separation.
He was in last week, you're right, but he, I don't think we do, touched on.
Abraham.
On the Abraham's Report.
No, what Mark gave us was an update, Commissioner Stady, on the status of the I T improvements that were funded through the supplemental.
Okay, no problem. Is the Aggie School, John, I was trying to write down some notes here. Did you mention the Aggie School coming in as well separately, or would that be a separate presentation?
That would be December first, Commissioner.
Uh, say it again, I'm sorry?
Twelve one.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, no, I think it's a great schedule. I think it makes sense. Uh, fantastic. I would ask, I'm sure John's going to do this, our director is. Uh, fantastic. I would ask, I'm sure John's going to do this. Our director is so well organized, but at this point, uh, a calendar for November with some of these items on there would be great. Um, one other thought I had would be, again, we plan to meet with the other counties. Where are we on that? But does it, well, on this particular topic, fine, I got no further questions. No further questions.
Commissioner Collins, you like that schedule?
I'm fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will send out invitations and report back if there's any difficulties or need to change.
Okay.
All right.
Hey, we'll incorporate it right into our meetings. If it goes longer, it goes longer. That's all we can do about it. It's the best we can. They know we're here. We know they're coming, and we'll be ready.
Great.
Um, the next item is, just to alert you, um, I've been told by our auditors that they are achieving the um, the near end of their process. And I'll be meeting with them, and I believe Joe Doria next Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken, it's early next week um, to receive their draft report and uh, preliminary findings. So as soon as I hear anything that I can share with you, I will likely next week. Um, but uh, it's, it's good to see that they're coming to the end of their audit, so um, immediately following the acceptance of this audit, they will move into the FY21 cycle. Um, and that's something that it's a whole other exercise of preparedness. Uh, we'll tackle that sometime in November. Also, earlier today, I met with um, Commissioners um, Shea. As I mentioned, uh, my goal, pun intended, I guess, is to engage in the same performance uh, evaluation processes the department heads. Um, utilizing three goals I listed and I provided to Chairman Shea. He's adopted them. Um, I'll be working towards those goals over the fiscal year and uh, circling back with him in January. And then towards the end of the fiscal year, same cycles the department heads. Um, I'll speak individually with each of you commissioners about what the goals are, but um, at this point, the, the matter is in motion uh, per Commissioner Shea. And I think we're off to the races with a, a PE program for myself.
This, this deals with reviews for the county director, by the way, commissioners.
Great idea.
We're going to review our director, of course.
Right.
He's only five months into the calendar, and it, I've been an exciting five months, so that's okay.
Um, God willing, I keep trying so hard to get this done. Uh, by the end of the week, I hope to have a draft capital budget out to our departments. I spoke at a department head meeting yesterday about the task ahead to uh, reform or revisit uh, the fiscal year twenty-three capital budget project list, which was advanced by the Abraham's Group uh, on first blush. There are several projects within that plan that appear to have been either addressed from other sources or have moved around. So I'm going to try to get feedback from the uh, various department heads to update that plan and present it to you a week from today. Um, so that uh, we can be in sync with the recommendations of the Abraham's Group to have a capital budget um, approved, if you will, by the end of October. I just want to put a footnote on this, uh, two things. Number one, you'll remember we approved funding, one million dollars exactly, to, towards projects associated with the FY23 capital budget. Number two, this budget will not be put in place until July one, twenty-twenty-two. Between now and then, things will move. With, this project will be impacted, or I should say, this plan will be impacted by the FY22 capital plan, which is ongoing. Uh, that we will no doubt encounter some challenges, trying to get certain things done. In the event we need to move something, for example, from twenty-two into the next fiscal year, we'll try to swap out and move things around. So while I have something for you a week from today, I, I hope you understand that it, it is an iterative process. Um, and I'll do my best to update this quarterly so that we can optimize the financial resources associated with these projects to the betterment of the county. Um, and again, I'll try to have that for you by next week. Um, just a footnote, uh, the department head meeting went very well yesterday, good attendance. Um, we discussed a host of different things, um, including number of the items we discussed today. In addition, we talked about some of the upcoming hires. Um, you approved three of them to, excuse me, two of them today in facilities. You'll have a third one next week. Engineering is moving forward, um, and should have second rounds of interviews within the next week or two. Unfortunately, Carl Minor's having difficulty finding that assistant superintendent. Uh, it is a very difficult market to backfill that position. Uh, it is currently posted, and he's anxiously and hurriedly um, um, recruiting and putting that word out for that position. As soon as we have somebody to put forward, we will do so. Uh, other than that, it was just a host of other house, housekeeping issues. Uh, overall, good meeting. Um, Mr. Chairman, that is all I have this week uh, for report. Thank you for your patience.
Okay. Any questions on the director?
Yes, one, if I may.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, for you, do we have any follow-up yet on the Wallaston Golf Course? By that I mean signage in the restaurant we tabled. I'm not sure if we have a timetable on that. And it was one other question on the walkways. Any kind of a brief update on that?
So, Commissioner Stady, with your indulgence, I will take that email string that I know you're very familiar with, uh, and I've been sharing. Uh, and if you allow me to, I'm going to just ping that back to Carl and uh, the sign company to get an update. Uh, I, I think we all have patience for the work that the sign company's been doing, but for some reason, perhaps it's supply stream, we're not sure. Um, they are well beyond the expected delivery point of when we thought we'd have the signs installed. So if you'll allow me, I'll, I'll, I'll seek through electronic process to get an update and inform you that way, so, okay?
That's fine. Yep, thank you.
But we're just going to keep following up on it until it gets, it's, it's frustrating, I know, but um, and regarding, I think the restaurant matter, are you referring to the request by the operator for uh, relief on his rent? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, yes.
I, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the commissioners took a vote of no action.
Until we start our renegotiation.
Right. They tabled it, yeah.
I see. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, how about one last thing that John McGowan mentioned in your department meeting? So through you, uh, the boilers on, on president registry, are they?
Oh, yes. Um, thank you, Commissioner Stady, yes. Um, so the boiler, um, a couple of things. This is the boiler in the registry that we know we have problems with. Number one, our insurance agent went out to look at it uh, as a possible um, reimbursement um, as, due to the damage. And they've determined that uh, it is not likely to be covered under our insurance program. Not a total surprise. I did ask uh, facilities to discuss the possibility of reassembling the existing boiler to generate um, some amount of heat in a safe fashion until the new one can be installed. I, I'd like to remind everyone that the boiler was operating uh, before it was taken offline earlier this year for scheduled maintenance. And at that time, it was discovered the internal baffles had deteriorated substantially. So it was never assembled, put back together. Uh, we are now faced with uh, close to a thirty thousand dollar cost to bring in portable outside heat from a vendor um, to get us through December and January, which is when we expect the new boiler to be shipped. Um, and we're trying to avoid that cost. Obviously, insurance won't cover it. The best way to avoid it would be to determine if the existing boiler could operate safely under lower pressure or other standards to give us enough heat to get us through two months. Um, that, it's kind of a long shot, but it was worth asking. As soon as we know, we'll let you know. In the meantime, facilities is seeking, with Nancy's help, three quotes from firms to give us portable heating, but the initial costs are, as I mentioned, about thirty thousand a month, and that does include a substantial upcharge in the first month to set up the device and hook it into our system.
Okay. Excellent. Glad I asked. Thank you for the answer. Thank you. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How are we doing, Commissioner Collins?
We're good.
Okay. Number eighteen. Number fifteen, any emergency items, any topics we did not reasonably anticipate? I have none this week. Um. I'm anxious to get started on the Abraham's Report. That's the reason for the calendar that we've adopted today, and I hope we can stick to it. Uh, that in addition to uh, opening of Opera will, will, I think, make for a busy fall. And then we're going to go right into the twenty-twenty-three budget, which always is challenging and interesting. And I'd like to wrap a lot of the stuff around the twenty-three budget, if possible. Uh, and our door is always open in between then and there, and there's a lot of discussion coming up, so I look forward to it. In the meantime, uh, all our many maintenance problems and issues, we'll keep an eye on them as we go along, and it's hard to believe it's uh, well into October. We're getting a break with the weather, but I'm sure it'll change. Especially after we uh, talk about roofwork and everything, it always, it, it usually does. So I'll take a motion to adjourn, and I'm going to just mention that uh, the staff and fellow commissioners wish a happy birthday to Commissioner Stady.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Born on this day, in the fifties.
I love it. Much appreciated. Thank you. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Commissioner.
Happy birthday, happy birthday, Dave.
I have some cake and ice cream. They're waving at me. I gotta go.
The present, the present got lost in the mail somewhere.
That's, being with you guys, believe me, is, is uh, part of that present.
That's a present.
Here it is. It's been great being with you and serving with you guys. It's terrific. Thank you all. Thank you very much.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved. I have a second.
All in favor, so moved. We have a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next week.
All right. Take care.
Just going better than usual.